November 17th, 2016, zoning board of appeals meeting. All members present. Thank you for coming tonight, okay? First thing on the agenda tonight is the minutes from the previous meeting, October 27th, 2016. Did everybody have a chance to re- to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay. Are there any changes?
No.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Sub move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, hearing a motion and a second. Is there any questions? Anything to discuss? No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Toby, the minutes are approved. Okay. All right, Toby, you're up. Miscellaneous mail and paperwork. They need signatures.
Okay, well, that invoice, we're gonna just take care of it Sunday.
Yep, we'll take care of that on Sunday.
This was just something that was left by many of us. I plan to be able to...
Okay. All right, just so you know, this is the site plan review. This is for the 90 Sterling Street in West Burleson, Big Daddy Realty, the old Reservoir Motel, okay? They brought their plans and gave all their stuff to the planning board at their last meeting. And the planning board has, will be holding a public hearing on December 14th at 8:00 PM. So if you're interested in going, then that's the time to go. I will tell you that I did happen a chance, I did get a chance to look at this. And they want to put in 16 units, which is what the board approved, but they want to do it in eight buildings. Okay? They want to put eight buildings on that property. And put, I believe, two units in each building. So anyways, here's a copy. This is a review. If anybody wants to look at it, the town clerk also has a copy of this. That's where I got, that's where I saw mine. So, and then Toby will have that, okay?
And then I didn't know if, just after I had, everyone should have gotten the emails.
Oh yeah, okay. We're not even gonna go there. Okay, all right.
It's all just...
All right. Just so the board knows, that last night, John Benson had applied to be an associate member on the ZBA. The selectmen voted unanimously to put him back on. He was sworn in. So he will be here tonight for the public hearing that we have at, at 8 o'clock. So thank you to Mr. Benson. We'll re-renate, re-reniate that again when, when he comes in here. But he was one of the original, when this board first came back over in 2012, right, Charlie? 2012, okay? In other words, the only two people left from that original 2012 board is Charlie and myself. So, and now Mr. Benson's back. So he'll be a great asset to the team, even just being an associate member. So that's a, that's a good thing. Okay, is there, does anybody have anything that they need to discuss? No? Okay. The only other thing is, is that we did receive a petition from the applicant, okay? For 264 Prospect Street, okay? And that is going to be coming to us in the near future. There's still some things that need to be hashed out. He'll, there's some things going on with this, with this particular petition. They have to go, they're gonna be going to the conservation commission first before they come to us. So we probably won't hear this, probably won't have a public hearing on this until, I believe, January, so...
And that email is printed out, I mean, it's, it's with it to explain...
So everybody should have a copy of this. You might wanna just, you know, make sure you hang on to this, so that Toby doesn't have to make more copies come January, please. Okay? Um, okay. Well, I don't know. Should we, do we need to wait till 7:45?
It's not a public hearing. I don't know that we need to wait. On the other hand, if, if there are public that are expecting to come at 7:45, we may wanna wait.
Which one is this?
With Mr., informal discussion.
It's better to wait.
Better to wait, okay. All right. Toby, anything else?
Uh, no, that was it.
Okay. All right. We're going to take, we're gonna go to break until 7:45. A recess till 7:45, okay? All right.
Ali, regarding 94 North Main Street, the update on the final approval from MHP and the signing completed regulatory agreement and other matters pertaining to this project. Okay, so Mr. Ali and Mr. Harrison, please step forward. Okay, so, thank you for all the information, okay, we now have...
Can I, um, I just put, excuse me Chairman, I did put a package together to make sure that everything was in one place.
Okay, fine.
Would you try to do that?
Go for it.
If I hand them out?
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Yeah, give Toby two copies, please, thank you.
Thank you.
And what I'm gonna do Toby is, is after the meeting, I'm gonna swap, I'm gonna give you the original and you'll give me one of the copies, okay?
Alright.
Okay. So, let's just go back a little ways, okay? The comprehensive permit was to expire on October 3rd of this year. You still had not received, um, final approval from MHP.
Correct.
Okay? You came before the board, after a couple of visits, the board approved on September 29th of this year. Um, I'll read to extend your, the comprehensive permit for 60 days so that you guys could, you know, get this done, okay? Um, I had personally spoken to MHP, they, and they had sent an email to, um, Town Administrator Anita Shipers, uh, stating that by the end, by, hopefully by the end of October that everything would be taken care of, okay? I see now, there's been a bunch of emails that have come out, and I even got a copy of it. Um, it looks like you now have your final approval from MHP. So that's all taken care of.
Yes.
Okay, alright. Now, with that being said, you did the regulatory agreement.
Yes.
That's all been signed and taken care of, okay? Alright. Now, I noticed that at one thing, that when you gave us the Middlesex Savings Bank Agreement, okay? It was contingent on MHP giving you their approval, okay? So, and maybe I didn't understand what was going on, I know there was an email sent out about, about this. Now, this one that we have from September 14th of 2016, is that the final version? Because I don't see any signatures on it, that's why I'm asking.
The copy you have in the, in my package I gave you was signed.
Alright, okay, that, that's, that's what I need to know, okay?
I know it's on some of the emails.
Alright.
It was signed by both, um, the bank and Mr. Ali.
Alright, that's what I wanna see.
On page 7.
Alright. Alright, so everybody sees that, that this has been signed and everything is now in order.
Yes.
You have your MHP approval and you have the Middlesex and you have the regulatory agreement, okay?
And you, and we paved the road already.
And you paved the road already, oh good, that's great, I saw that.
Can I?
Yep, go ahead.
So this, uh, MHP approval is on November 15th, do you have to go to the bank after that or before it's...
Doesn't matter, because what it is, it, their approval was based upon...
MHP.
MHP approval. Whenever I need money now, I'll go to the bank.
I totally understand. Uh, my understanding was, the bank approved the loan on the condition of...
MHP.
MHP approval. Once the MHP is approved, do you have to go back to the bank and say, hey, I have an MHP approval?
They are closing tomorrow morning at 10:00.
The reason I'm asking is...
They're closing the bank loan tomorrow morning at 10:00.
Tomorrow morning at 10:00, okay.
The, the only thing I'm going by is the paper, I don't see a closing things. So the reason is in the November 15th was the MHP approval, just for the record. And also the, uh, Middlesex Savings Bank, you have signed on October 3rd.
Yeah.
So that's the reason I'm asking, what I'm, what I want to clarify is, after the MS, MHP approval, do you have to go back to the bank and say, we got the approval from the MHP?
We have provided all the documents to the bank.
Hmm.
Mr. Ali's closing with the bank, Middlesex closing is tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock.
Okay, can you send us a copy of that when it's all done?
Uh, you mean, so, if you prefer, we can send you a copy.
Yes, we, we would prefer that, so we have all the documents, is that gonna be okay?
It will be recorded at registry of deeds anyhow, it's a public record.
Okay.
With that, you know, I do have one other clarification, I'm sure the Town Council will go over it. So the, I do understand your project is Saja Gardens, formerly known as Village at North Main Street. It was given on the MHP, whereas in the loan, it's called Village at North Main Street.
What's the issue?
Village at North Main Street.
On the...
The September 14th letter from...
On the Middlesex.
...Middlesex Savings.
Yes.
Look in the ray line, the regarding line, says apartment complex to be known as the Village at North Main. Is that still correct, or is that outdated?
No, no.
No, no.
That was corrected.
That's what he's asking.
Yeah, that was, that was a commitment, but it was corrected, and MHP and Middlesex, they both had to work together. And after that, what we did was, the borrower is Saja Gardens.
I agree, totally agree, it's just a clarification.
And if you also look...
Yeah, I know, I know, I know here.
If you look at the final approval in the regarding line, Saja Gardens, West Boylston, formerly Village at North Main Street, West Boylston, Project Aqua Alley, uh...
He's talking about not Middlesex Bank.
I know, but I'm just saying, I understand that he's saying that, and I'm also saying that, you know, it is in the comprehensive permit, the project is known as Saja Gardens. MHP's final approval is in the proper name, Saja Gardens. Whether or not the commitment says...
Tommy Prince has also said that.
Yeah, it says, it's out, made out to Saja Garden LLC, and all loan documents will be in the name of, will include the name of the project as Saja Gardens.
Is there any specific reason why that changed?
Saja Gardens?
Yeah, why, why the project is now called Saja Gardens and not the Village at North Main Street?
We asked for that as part of the comprehensive, the amended and new stated comprehensive permit.
Okay.
It was granted as that.
Dave, can I...
Yep, go ahead Charlie.
This housing authority, they said that you could have 80 units. I thought you were approved for 96 in the beginning.
Yes, it was approved for 96, then I came back to the town and it was understanding from, uh, all the other boards on the town, that I'm going to reduce the density, take one floor off the big building. And I think you were also in the discussion, maybe you must have missed it, because Building C had 54 units, and that was the biggest building. And the town boards had requested for me to see if I consider to cut down the density. So, I agreed for 16 units to be cut down.
They didn't dictate to you that they wanted 80?
It's a mutual understanding.
You, you did it yourself.
It was a mutual.
It, it makes it easier to build and own.
Yeah.
Okay.
That was presented to the zoning board of appeals as part of the amended and new stated comprehensive permit. And that's how the permit was issued, with 80 units.
That's why it took longer time with MHP, because MHP had approved for 96 minutes earlier, then we changed it to 80. That took us more time to get that thing approved.
I will imagine.
That's all.
As, as you mentioned, there have been amendments in the past that have been approved by this board. You're now at the point where you've received your final approval, you've received, you've got the regulatory agreement, I mean, it, it seems like you are very close to at the point where you're gonna be dealing much more with the building inspector, as opposed to...
Actually, as per the ZBA's consent, I don't even had to be here because I was supposed to get the final approval. It was a formal thing, we just came in to present it.
Yeah.
You people have worked too hard. I also have worked hard for two years.
Absolutely.
Finally the day is here, it's done.
Yep, a- absolutely, and, and so, so my only question to that was, do you expect, uh, the plan to change at all in the future at this point? Or you feel like the plan is final, it's done?
If I have any changes, I'll be in front of the board for changes, but right now, I don't foresee anything.
Okay.
The, the application has been submitted to the building inspector. Um, the requirement in the comprehensive permit, condition 14, stated that, um, the building permit could not be issued till the final approval was provided, which we are doing.
Correct.
And basically, we're providing it to you as a courtesy, the board as a courtesy, and the building inspector already has it. Um, so, Mr. Ali is expecting the building permit shortly. Thank you.
Nelson? Okay. One last thing, okay? Received an email from Wayne, Amico, from the engineer, BHB, okay? And I'm assuming that this has already been taken care of. It had to do with the, um, the drainage ditch, uh, the drainage catch, uh, catch basins, that they were sitting below the binder pavement that was just installed?
No. What happens is, they leave all the castings down the road, they pave it over so it's even paving. Now I'm going to, this week, next week, I'm going to cut all those pavement out, pick up the cast, casting so water cannot go to Main Street. It catches in, the catch basins in the project.
Okay. Alright, so...
I, I had a discussion with Wayne also, he agreed to it, and we are doing that thing.
And then, once that's done, then...
Wayne goes for inspection.
Then the engineer will go back out, inspect it to make sure, and then we'll get a, we'll get a report?
Every, every, everything what we have done has been inspected by VHB and the town.
Okay.
And I saw, I think, a follow-up email from Wayne on that topic about, in the meantime, possibly putting in, I don't know, berms or, or not berms, but something...
No, we have done that thing already.
Erosion control?
Erosion control, we have taken care of it, and we have created some ditches.
Okay.
So, though the water is clean, clean water coming out on the asphalt, but, uh, there'll be a lot of velocity. So all, though the water is clean, clean water coming out on the asphalt, but there, there'll be a lot of velocity because of the impurous base. So we have created some trenches, and I had discussion with UHP and Jack from VHP, they are all aware of it.
And that'll be there until the drainage is finally, you know?
Next week it will be open.
Okay.
Okay, I know that you submitted for a building permit to the building inspector, okay? And he did have some questions or concerns, some concerns, because there were some things that weren't provided, but I guess that, um, the architect said that, that they don't have to provide all this stuff, that you can be issued, um, a building, a partial building permit?
It's a, it's a deferred permitting process, which is allowed by the code.
Okay.
And what happens is, all the plumbing people, when they come in, they have their own engineer, everyone is getting their own plans to be submitted to the building inspector for his approval, because all subcontractors have their own engineers, they like to do it on their own way. Like engineering, fire alarm has to be approved by the fire inspector before it's installed, everything has to be, it's a process.
Right.
And they have to pull the building permits, the electrician, the plumbers?
Everyone has a separate permit.
And all of that'll be, the building inspector will have that within the next week or two?
Building inspector will have it, I think there must be a time factor on that one, because that's how we, usually they do it like sixty days.
Okay, it says by the end of December?
Yeah.
Okay.
Do you want to hear from buildings?
Building inspector?
Yes, sir.
What other information can you provide for us that we need to know about? As far as this building, about, as far as the, uh, the permit?
I provided you with my recommendations.
Right.
That, a copy of the letter from the architect saying I was going to be forwarded this, all the information I needed by December thirtieth, which, that's one you just referenced.
Okay.
And I had a memo to you, Zone Board, um, requesting that you give him the, give me the authorization to issue the permit.
Is this for the Building C or?
Yes, it says on here, Building C only.
That's the first building.
When you say partial building permit, what exactly are you, what exactly is that? What is the partial? What can he do, what can't he do?
It's building per, the outer shell, the foundation and the shell of the building. He just won't be able to do anything on the inside until I get the, uh, plans for the electrical plumbing and mechanical sprinkler.
This is the normal process, we're not asking any, there's
No, no, I understand, I understand.
Just wanna make sure everything's understood.
Any questions, comments?
So that means, you know, you do not have an electrical plumbing, fire sprinkler, fire alarm, all those documents ready?
Separate permits, those are separate permits.
Sprinkler is a separate permit with the fire department, but it goes through the building permit, because everything, building inspector
You don't have the document right now to submit to the building inspector.
I have a partial document, if I give it to him, I'll be wrong, because there, there are a lot of calculation change because of the water pressure, they had to do all their engineering.
So to the building inspector, once you receive the electrical design, the plumbing design, the fire sprinkler system, and the fire alarm system, can you give me a ballpark figure of how long it may take for you to examine, examine all of that and make a determination if everything is within the code?
Probably a week, two weeks now, because I have to have my other inspectors, you know, the plumbing, gas, electric, review their portions, and the fire chief now will go with the sprinkler portion.
Okay, so basically, we're looking at the middle of January?
Yes.
I do, yeah, one other question, it's, 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 it looks like it's, the name is again changing, it says ninety-two North Main Street. On the building inspectors.
Ninety, Main Street.
Ninety-two North Main Street.
Section ninety-two.
Okay, yeah.
That's a different parcel in ninety-four.
Yeah. But all our comprehensive permits and everything says ninety-four North Main Street.
Yes, I do agree, we have a A and R plan, building inspector was very specific about looking at the A and R plan this morning. It is subdivided now, the booking page, everything, at the tax collector's office, everything will change. With three numbers, there are three parcels in the, ninety-four North Main has three parcels now, its description is, one is ninety-four, ninety-two, and the other one is?
No, it's ninety-two A, B, and C.
A, B, and C, the building, the buildings are ninety-two A, B, and C, but there are three parcels, one parcel is the three family, what we have, one is the comprehensive permit where the
Which one is C, which one is B?
No.
Ninety-two A, ninety-two B, ninety-two C.
It's the same.
That goes by the building number.
So this is, there's not gonna be any problems, legal problems with, because since this, this project has been in conception since two thousand and four, it's always been designated as ninety-four North Main Street, and now, it's ninety-two North Main Street, okay? So I just wanna make sure that there's no, no issues with this, that this is now ninety-two North Main Street. Ninety-two A, ninety-two B, and ninety-two C is the correct address of these three buildings.
Yes.
And ninety-four is the N I R, is the house that's in front? Okay?
That's correct.
All right, anything else?
I think it may be a question for the town council, because it says ninety-four North in the comprehensive permit, right?
Yeah.
So when you change this, does it, has to be reflected in the comprehensive permit? Maybe that, this may be the question for the town council.
Well, I think that, and you, you could be right, but I believe that at one time, that, that the house and the land behind it was all one.
Yes.
And when they did the A and R, does the A and R split up the property?
Yeah.
Okay, because I mean, you guys do it on the planning board?
Yes, I think the ZBA did this one.
ZBA's saying this one?
We did this one, so basically, what we did is, we separated the house and that land from
Makes sense.
With the forty-B project, so that should be, and then the building inspector is the one that assigns the addresses?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So you're saying that there's no, there's no issues, that this is now ninety-two North Main Street?
His office is at ninety-four.
Right.
But the project is ninety-two, ninety-two C.
All right. I, I don't, I, I don't see any problems, I mean, if, if, if the board so desires, I could, you know, get town council's word, you know, get their information on it, you know, see what they say, but I, you know, the building inspector's already, we've already granted an A and R that separated the two properties. And like I said, the building inspector's the one that, you know, and that, I know, understand what you're saying, Raj, because that's the same question that I had, is that everything from conception, from two thousand and four up to now, has always been ninety-four North Main Street.
That was stated in the comprehensive permit, so
That was the description.
Yes.
Numbers have been allotted by the building inspector, the description is with the land with the permit.
The legal description of the property has not changed. With the A and R plan, there's those parcels have been divided into three parcels, those legal descriptions within those parcels have not changed.
And building inspector can give the new numbers.
Yes.
Any thoughts on that?
Anything else, anybody else, anybody, Charlie, anything?
Nope.
Nate?
Nope.
Okay, Raj?
Except this one, you know, I would check with the town council.
As far as the address?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine, and we'll just, all right, so, um, seeing as that this was an informal, um, I don't believe that we're gonna be able to approve a partial building permit, because it wasn't announced, or can we?
It, it's
Nope.
It's, it's not a public vote, it, the, the, the board is just confirming that we provided the final permit. If you read condition fourteen of the comprehensive permit,
Right.
it states that the building permit cannot be issued until the final approval is received,
Right.
which we have submitted to you, and all of the state requirements for the comprehensive permit. If the building inspector is asking you to confirm that you received the final, the final approval, um, that's not a public hearing, it's, it's a matter of you just notifying, which we have officially submitted it to you tonight, you've seen it, you've seen it prior to tonight, so I don't see the issue of ask, and having the, um, note, informing the building inspector that you have received it, and that was the condition of the permit. I mean, it's not a requirement for a public hearing.
Okay, and the, and the partial building permit would just be the foundation of Building C and the shell?
Yes.
And that's it, no interior work until the rest of this, until the middle of January, when all of this comes to you, and you and the chief, uh, chief, uh, fire department inspect it, and then you'll send a report to us saying that you have received this, you, all your inspectors have reviewed it, and everything's ready to go. Am I correct?
Yes, I can do that.
Okay, all right, anybody wanna entertain a motion?
But what is the town council said on this?
On what?
Uh, reviewing the final
All she's, all she basically said as far as the comprehen, uh, the regulatory agreement was, is that all she can do is just to review paragraph twenty-nine, which has to do with the monitoring agent.
Yeah.
Okay? And so, I guess that's paragraph twenty-nine of the comprehensive permit, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
And what that is, the monitoring agent is if, if and when MHP is no longer the monitoring agent, in the comprehensive permit, it states that the town will step in as the monitoring agent and will assume the, basically assume the regulatory agreement. But we would have to notify you at the time that MHP, and MHP's, it's in a few years, it's not gonna happen tomorrow.
So what's the norm for that, for that to happen?
For what, what happens at that time is if the, for some whatever reason, MHP, after this, the term of this is up, um, we would then have to notify the town that, um, MHP is withdrawing, MHP would also notify the town. The town then would have the option to, um, be the monitoring agent, or the applicant can propose a new monitoring agent, or MHP could continue with a new agreement, but the regulatory agreement is recorded and, and runs with the land.
All right, any other things?
So based on the town council's email, we are, today we are just acknowledging we received the documents, is that right?
Yeah.
So we are acknowledging.
So I can't make a motion, but, um, in accordance with, um, the information that's been provided to us by the, the petitioner, by Mr. Ali, and the letter that we got from the building inspector, um, we should be able to approve, um, the, um, should be able to approve the, um, now, this letter that we got on November first from you, this has already been all taken care of, this is the one that had the list of, um, all the construction of the things that were missing. That's all taken care of, okay, so that's null and void now, okay, all right, okay, all right, so, um, I guess we can authorize, to authorize the building inspector to issue a partial building permit for ninety-two North Main Street, Saja Gardens, for Building C only, and only for the foundation and the shell. And that, once the building inspector has received all the plans for the electrical design, the plumbing design, the fire sprinkler system, and the fire alarm system, then at that time, once the board receives the information, then we can go ahead and, and adjust the building permit, does that sound fair?
Yes.
Do I hear a motion? Yes, because we have to vote to give, to allow the building inspector to, to do that.
Want to hold the public?
Yes.
Bob Holden, props to a lot of heights, right here it says, this information cannot be acted upon this evening, it must be on the next meeting. It's been my understanding, I don't want, unless it's indicated on the notice, you can't make a vote.
We're not asking, can
Yeah, I don't think, they haven't asked us to move anything at this point. It's been the building inspector in his letter that was asking for authorization to issue a building.
That's true, but this, on the agenda, this is described in an informal meeting.
Yes.
And once you make a motion, a motion is outside the scope of an informal discussion.
One could argue that.
One certainly could. An informal, it states something specifically as an informal discussion suggests strongly that no decision will be made. You could argue if someone, if a greater motion like this could be made, you might have greater evidence here.
Well, I, I would argue, we also have a public hearing on the agenda tonight, it, it doesn't say anything about a vote, but that doesn't mean that, that that's not sufficient notice, that a vote would be taken, but that said, your, your point is well taken, your, your, your point is well taken.
The comp, excuse me, the comprehensive permit states that once we provide a copy of the final approval for MHP, that the building permit should be issued. We're not, by the inspector coming in, asking you for permission, I think that's outside the preview of the permit. The permit states, as long as we provide and provide all the other requirements, uh, if you look at condition fourteen, it shall not be unreasonably withheld either.
Okay.
Um, that goes back to the original decision back in two thousand and eight. So while we understand the board is being cautious, there is no need to take official vote to authorize
So basically, we can just instruct the building inspector to
Acknowledge.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of any grounds before us that would give us the power, the jurisdiction, whatever you wanna call it, to prevent the issuance of a building permit at this time, I'm not an expert, but I'm not aware of anything like that. Similarly, the, the petitioners, um, or, again, they're not here, as far as I understand, asking for anything tonight. They've come to sort of close, close the loop on this, to provide these documents, I, I don't know what there is for, for this board to do.
We're more here for the courtesy, uh, more here as a courtesy to the extension, which stated specifically that we needed to provide a copy of the final approval to the board prior to December third, which we're here doing. We're not here to debate or discuss the building permit, it's very clear that the building permit should be issued upon the receipt of the final approval. So we're more here giving a courtesy to follow up to the original extension, um, that we needed to provide you with a copy.
So basically, you don't need our approval, because the comprehensive permit says that once you've provided, once you've provided everything,
Yeah.
you know, so basically, now the building inspector can go ahead and issue a partial permit, um, for the foundation and the outer shell at this time.
It's up to the building inspector what he can provide, he has the deduction after MHP final approval, after the permit extension was signed. Now it's building inspector's authority to tell us what to do, what not to do.
Okay, all right, well, we're gonna
At the same time, you know, the board has to tell them, tell the building inspector too, we have, we have all the documents.
Okay, so now we can tell them, we don't have to take a vote, but we can just say, you can go ahead and issue the building permit?
But not one person, right? I'm not sure.
We are not taking a vote, it's in, the permit has described everything what's required, the building inspector has all the paperwork from the permit, what is required to do everything.
Okay, so here, I'll make it real simple, as the chairman of the board of the ZBA, I'm gonna authorize the building inspector to issue a, a partial building permit, just for the foundation and the outer shell.
Building C.
And I will take the responsibility and the heat if anything comes down, okay? So we'll leave it at that, okay? And then he'll come, he'll send us a letter in January, when he receives all the other information, to come back and let us know, and then we'll discuss the rest of the information, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, is, um, are the people here for the public hearing?
There's a bunch of people out there.
Okay, John, oh, Mr. Fork, okay, Mr. Fork.
Did you hear that?
No, no.
No, because if you already started, I can't...
No, no, they win the ballots.
They're going to say that I can...
You're accusing yourself for this, right?
Yeah.
Okay, before we start, I've got two things, one is, um, because Raj has a conflict with this public hearing, he's going to recuse himself, and our so, our new associate member, Mr. Benson, who has graciously come back to the board after a little bit of a hiatus, is now back with us, and welcome back, Mr. Benson, thank you very much for coming back, we'll take whatever expertise you can, you have, you know, however we can. So Mr. Benson will be sitting in just for this, for this public hearing, okay? Alright, so little ground rules here. We'll open the public hearing, we'll give the petitioner, Mr. Fark, and Patrick, time to give their spiel, and then if your clients want to speak, they'll be able to speak. When you're done, the board will have, if the board has any questions, they'll ask the questions of you. Once the board is finished asking questions, we'll open it up to the public, if anybody's here from the public, to hear this, okay? We're all set with that? Okay. So, zoning board appeals will hold a continued public hearing at the West Boylston Town Office's one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., on Thursday, November seventeen, two thousand sixteen, at eight P.M., to act on the petition of Worcester Behavioral Innovations Realty LLC for special permit for continuation of parking use for a new inpatient outpatient hospital in the existing building in Worcester, already serving by the parking area, at zero East Mountain Street, one hundredth Century Drive, West Boylston, Mass. Record title stands in the name of WCS one hundredth Century Drive, Inc., three thirty-three South Street, Suite two ninety, Shrewsbury, Mass., oh one five four five. Copies of the petition are on file in the office of the town clerk, one forty Worcester Street, all interested parties are invited to attend the hearing, okay? Alright, just to give the public a little bit, we had this on the agenda the last, last month, but we didn't have a full board, the petitioner graciously asked for us to postpone this until November, we now have a full board, we can now hear this petition, okay? Mr. Fark, you're up, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, board members, again, Brian Flock from Ira O'Connell, here on behalf of the applicant, Worcester Behavioral Innovations Realty LLC. With me, as you mentioned, is Patrick Healy from Thompson Liston. We also have here, um, Dr. Richard Kresh and James Cha from U.S. Health Fest, along with Chris Philbin and Cheryl Lepriary from U.S., uh, UMass Memorial. Worcester Behavioral is a joint venture between U.S. Health Fest and UMass Memorial. The property Hundredth Century Drive is in the Worcester Corporate Center, divided between Worcester and West Boylston, and only accessible on roads through Worcester. The existing office building is located entirely on the Worcester side of the municipal boundary. Most of the accessory parking is located in West Boylston, we have some parking in Worcester, but the majority of the parking is located in West Boylston. And that configuration will remain exactly the same, what we're looking to do is change the use of the existing building from office to an inpatient outpatient mental health, um, hospital. Again, nothing changes in West Boylston, it's accessory parking to an office right now, it will become accessory parking to a hospital. The reason we're here is, a hospital use requires a special permit under the West Boylston zoning bylaw, um, and by, uh, flow that the accessory parking to a use that requires a special permit also requires a special permit. So we're here seeking that special permit, um, as you know, we were also before the planning board seeking site plan approval, we were, uh, before that board last week. The site provides more than sufficient parking for the hospital use, we have a total of four hundred and fifteen parking spaces on the site, uh, the use only requires a hundred and eighty spaces, and that's detailed in, uh, Mr. Healy's letter to the board, uh, which he can go into in greater detail if the board wishes. Um, we, we believe the use clearly meets the standard for granting a special permit in section six point two E one of the zoning bylaw, I'm happy to go over that standard for the board and the, and the required findings if you wish. Given the benefits of this facility and the location of the facility in Worcester with little to no impact in West Boylston, we hope that you will grant this special permit. Thank you.
You're up, Mr. Healy, if you want to talk...
Actually, just, just before you start, I have one follow-up question for you. So you cited, uh, section six point two with the zoning bylaws for, um, you know, the special permit, um, authority?
Yes, or for the, for the standard.
For the standard, exactly.
Yes.
I just wanted to be clear, I can't remember, um, if this was specifically laid out in the petition or not, but under the schedule of use regulations, section three point two?
Three point two F five.
The particular F five?
Yep.
Or animal kennel or hospital?
Correct.
Um, and under it is medical clinic, where in the business or the industrial district, it's in allowed use with a special permit from this board?
Correct.
That's what you're requesting?
No, we're here for the ho- the hospital, this is a hospital use rather than a medical clinic.
Okay, it's a hospital use, so, so it is a...
The hospital is, is used there in the use table, along with animal kennel, I understand, but it's also used in the parking, uh, table, which tells us that hospital is a use contemplated by the zoning bylaw, and that's where it's positioned in the schedule of uses, so that's the use category we're seeking.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
What is, it's Worcester Behavioral Health, and you said it's inpatient and outpatient?
Correct.
What is being treated there, is this kind of, is this...
Mental, mental health services.
Okay, does mental health services include like detox and, um, uh, drug treatment program?
Um, I, if you, if I may, I'll turn to, um, either, uh, Dr. Kresh or James, if you wanna go over the details of the program?
Sure. The, uh, I'm Richard Kresh, I'm CEO of U.S. Health Fest, um, we would be licensed as an acute psychiatric hospital, which would, um, require that, um, the criteria for admission would be those patients that meet the criteria for such a facility, which would mean a primary psychiatric diagnosis. Detox would be considered a medical ancillary, uh, service provided by a psychiatric hospital, uh, drug rehabilitation would not. And, um, the services provided in the facility licenses way are short-term stay, five to eight-day average length of stay, uh, as opposed to the traditional, um, drug rehab, rehabilitation programs, which have much longer, uh, lengths of stays. So, uh, typically, you know, our most frequent admitting diagnosis is some form of, uh, what's called an affective disorder, could be depression, it could be bipolar, patients, you know, are likely to be suicidal, or so depressed they can't take care of themselves. Uh, and so our, our admissions are, are really, have to have a primary psychiatric diagnosis. There is such a thing as dual diagnosis, uh, which occurs unfortunately more and more frequently, where patients with a primary psychiatric diagnosis may attempt to self-medicate themselves, and they become involved in, you know, and have some issues with drugs, but that's not the primary reason for admission.
Is this a for-profit hospital, or is it nonprofit?
Uh, well, it's sort of a blend of both, because it's a joint venture between a for-profit entity, which is U.S. Health Fest, and a not-for-profit entity, which is UMass Memorial, uh, but the actual operation will be for-profit, so it'll be a taxable, uh, facility that would be paying property tax.
And you'll pay taxes to West Boylston?
Yes, however they're divided, on the West Boylston property, I said, there would be...
A parking lot isn't very good for taxes.
Maybe we could, we have more parking spots than we need, maybe we should consider opening a, a parking lot business, but, uh, right now, we're just a hospital, so we'll be using it for parking.
So getting back to the treatment that's gonna go on there, so you said this would not be a drug treatment, so if, from the outpatient side, this would, this would not involve drug, uh, drug treatment program?
Not specifically, uh, it would, it would be treating the same patients as outpatients that, um, would be, would have been inpatients.
But only if they have a primary psychiatric diagnosis other than some sort of substance abuse disorder?
Yeah, if the, if the, their, if their only diagnosis, or their primary diagnosis, is substance abuse, they would not meet admission criteria to the hospital.
On either an inpatient or outpatient basis?
Uh, they would have to have, again, you know, a, in order of, part of the reason for this is that, in order for us to get reimbursed as a hospital, they have to meet the criteria of our patients, so the same would, would apply to outpatients.
You okay with that, John?
Yeah, my answer's the question.
Chris, any questions? Nate? Charlie, anything else?
Uh, are you gonna have anybody on there working as security, or anything like that?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
We have security, we, uh, deal with security in two ways, our primary way of dealing with it is by prevention. So we, uh, in a psychiatric hospital, there is, um, a great deal of training, an ongoing training in, uh, crisis control and, and de-escalation of patients, so if there's an issue, a patient gets, um, agitated, the, uh, primary intervention is verbal. And we, there's a formal training, there's a formal procedure, much like the police would use, same type of, of, uh, training. And we actually, at each of our hospitals, have a in-house trainer, so we continue, continually reinforce the training that takes place initially, so people just don't get trained once, it's an ongoing process. So, our goal is not to have an incident, and not to need security, um, and, but, you know, sometimes there's always, you have to be prepared for, for something, you know, happening that's unexpected, and in that case, we do have in-house security personnel.
Is it a locked facility?
It's a locked facility. So not only, the facility is since doubly locked, because while the vast majority, probably ninety-nine percent, ninety-eight percent of the patients are voluntary, they've agreed to come in, they wanna get treated, um, we lock each unit, and we then lock the perimeter, patients walk around, they go to the dining room and, you know, to eat, and they have recreational areas, and, but, so the initial, each unit is locked, and then the perimeter of the patient care area is locked. So, and we do that even though a patient theoretically could ask to be discharged if they're voluntary, and we would have to do that, but, um, we do it really for control, and we wanna know where everybody is all the time, uh, so the units are, are locked. No one leaves the grounds, uh, you know, people don't walk around outside, and, uh, again, you know, the patients come in, they, you know, need treatment, they're obviously, you know, ill, because otherwise they would be outpatients, uh, and they need to be protected, and, and, uh, that, the way we do that is by keeping them inside the facility.
Anything else? Okay. Mr. Healy?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to hear more about the site, I'd be happy to.
Okay, um, you have four hundred and fifteen parking spots, okay? You're not gonna, you're not gonna...
Four hundred and fifteen existing parking spaces, we're not proposing to change that in any way.
Right.
I've provided you with a letter documenting the required spaces, uh, comparing what's required for the existing use, as in office building, uh, the number of spaces required is one sixty-four, so the number of spaces exceeds what's required for that use. For the hospital inpatient and outpatient uses combined, the required number of spaces would be a hundred and eighty, so there's still plenty of, uh, parking available.
Okay, and then an additional nine for...
Right, so nine, nine of those are required to be accessible spaces, there are nine accessible spaces existing.
Okay, that, that would be for the, for anyone that's disabled?
If you have a placard, you could use those spaces, right?
Alright, now...
Those spaces meet the requirements of the disabilities act and the architectural access board.
Now, how many of those have to be for vans? Just one?
Just one of those would be, have, have to be signed for a van.
And you, and you'll provide the sign?
Yeah, so that when I reviewed the site, the only thing I noticed that's missing is one, one sign that says van, to be placed...
And all these parking spots are directly in front of the building?
The accessible spaces are, as required by code, the nearest accessible spaces to the main entrance.
Okay.
Not the closest spaces, they are the nearest accessible spaces.
Okay.
So the reason, there is some of the spaces are quite a bit lower, you have to look steps to get to the building, so these are, these are the spaces on a level route that goes to the main entrance.
Okay, anybody have any questions for Mr. Healy? No? No, no? Anybody from the public that's here for this purpose? Okay, not hearing anybody from the public, okay? I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Hang on.
Okay, unless the board has another question?
I do.
Okay?
My apologies for...
No, that's okay.
...discussing it earlier. Um, and these might be best, uh, directed, again, at Mr. Fark, 'cause it, it's, they're pertaining to the, the zoning standards that, that we're supposed to address prior to deciding on whether or not to, to issue a, a special permit.
Sure.
Again, so it goes to section six point two, um, and so as I'm sure you're familiar, again, uh, the standard, uh, would not be where, this would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, welfare, comfort, or convenience of the community, would not be adverse to the town's economy and environment, and is in harmony with the intent and purpose of this bylaw. Um, just, and then there's, there's a few more details in there, but does that language, um, for, for everybody else on the board, um, I mean, I'm sure we're all pretty much, you know, aware of that concept, but, um, why don't I just, um, run into, so, so then, if you look on, I, I don't know if you have it in front of you or not?
I do.
Um, so section E four?
Yep.
Section B, there's a list of eight sort of standards that, that we're supposed to consider. Um, and I think, quite honestly, may, maybe a number of these may not apply to this situation, because the, the building itself is, is not within the, the town of West Boylston. And again, you're also not proposing any changes, so as far as ingress and egress, you know, I wouldn't expect that to, to lead to issues. Um, given, given the, the current use of the building, and given the, the proposed, the proposed use, and sort of the expected level of traffic that you might expect in this parking lot in the future, has, has anyone sort of considered how that may change relative to what is currently there now?
Well, in general, our use is significantly less than an office building, uh, because we do operate twenty-four seven, so that our employees are scattered over several shifts, three shifts a day, seven days a week, so that while we probably would have about two hundred employees, uh, at the most, there might be fifty at one time, uh, during daytime weekdays, uh, so the employee traffic is, uh, low. People come in at the beginning, leave at the end of their shifts, um, visiting is limited, it's unlike in a, in a general hospital, where people can come anytime they want, and they have, come in for X-rays and, you know, blood tests and clinic visits and, and all those things, there's a lot of activity, um, in a facility like this, this type of facility, you know, there aren't any of those services, so, and, and visiting, because of, again, the nature of the patient's illness, uh, is limited, so generally, we have two hours of visiting in the evening, uh, not every day of the week, because patients are involved in programming and therapeutic activities, uh, really from when they get up to when they go to sleep. The outpatient service that we offer is also what is called the day hospital treatment, so... So patients come in for a five-hour day. They're not in and out for individual visits like you would see in a, in a, in another office, you know, in an outpatient clinic or, or a med-surg hospital. So there's very little traffic, you know, that way as well. There will be offices for the academic psychiatric department of UMass, you know, in the building. So there, that will be the closest piece of the office use there is, but then again, it's not a large number of people.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
You just said about the, the outpatient. So is this like an intensive outpatient program? Where all the people are, so there's not individual hourly counseling where person X is going in to meet with their therapist for one hour, once a week, once a day, whatever it may be? This is strictly inpatient and then an intensive outpatient program?
Yes, and I was trying to avoid the professional lingo and jargon, but that's exactly what it is. And it's really a transitional type of treatment. So most of the patients who attend this program, after their acute hospital stay, where they stay overnight, they will transition back into the community through this intensive outpatient program, which is an all-day program, either three or five days a week, depending upon clinical needs. Once they move out of that, they would be referred back to a community resource for ongoing sort of individual type of treatment.
Anything else?
No, I mean, I was just looking through the, the remainder of the factors and, I mean, to me, you know, any danger of pollution, sewage disposal, excessive noise, vibration, glare, I mean, these are really sort of more building-related issues, I, I would, I would think, as opposed to the parking lot. So I don't see them as being particularly relevant to the petition that's before us.
Also too, just to make reference, in the letter that we were giving on the planning board detailing this, it says that the compact spaces were included on the, on the site plan as it was approved by the planning board in nineteen ninety-one. Okay, there are no physical changes are proposed to the parking lot and the lot has been in use for nearly twenty-five years. So really not changing anything other than the fact is, is that you're lowering the number of spaces that are required for what you need, okay? And I just might add that of the non-compact spaces, the full-size spaces, we have two hundred and sixty, which again exceeds the amount that we actually need for the use. So we can have a big party there, you know?
Yeah.
Just one quick question. Once everything is approved, how far down the line are we looking before this is fully operational?
Probably eighteen to twenty-four months.
So somewhere around two thousand and eighteen, roughly? Okay?
Yes.
Any other questions, John? Nothing? Chris?
No.
Nate?
No.
Charlie?
No.
Okay. I'll accept the motion to, to approve the special permit for change of use from an office building to a, and we determine that this is gonna be a hospital, medical clinic?
Not a medical clinic.
Not a medical, so it'll be a hospital? Hospital, accessory parking for a hospital use. Accessory for a hospital parking use.
Well, I guess I, I'll make a motion then to, to, to grant the, the requested special permit under, I guess it's three point two F five for that specific...
Yes.
Use that was requested.
I hear a motion, do I hear a second?
A second.
Hey?
Any other discussion? All in favor of granting the special permit? Say aye. Aye. Unanimous, five zero. Yep. So we're all set? Great.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Fok. Thank you, appreciate it.
Could I ask everybody, just to make sure that you've signed in, just so I can have everyone's names just speaking, so...
Good night, thank you. Okay, there is one last bit of business that I wanted to discuss with people. It has to do with, um, no, the cancellation of the December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Right now, we have nothing on the agenda. Mr. Benson, you, you're excused.
I'm excused. I'll stand by to sign my name to the vote sheet.
Thank you for ser-, thank you for you serving on the board.
We appreciate you as well, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Okay, Raj is back. The only, only other topic is to discuss and vote on possible cancellation of the December fifteenth, two thousand and sixteen meeting, okay? We're not sure what's gonna happen. I guess it's gonna be up to the COMCOM on that petition. Will they...
Well, our meeting is December fifth.
Anybody have any thoughts?
Is there a reason why you are canceling the December meeting?
Well, we have nothing in place.
Yeah, there, is there anything to discuss? Have you received any...
Yeah, but they have to go to the...
Right, but have they submitted it to us yet?
Yes.
They did.
You should have gotten a copy.
Yes, it's, it's in here. I received it tonight. I haven't had a chance to...
I mean, if the board chooses not to, just to keep the December fifteenth meeting, then we'll just go that way.
Well, I'm just thinking, so we've got, what is it, sixty-five days to open the public hearing?
Right.
Then, so between now and our January meeting, is that's more than sixty-five days?
But the petitioner has agreed, 'cause we've reached out to him, he has agreed that if it needs to be postponed, that he's willing to postpone.
Do we have it written?
Not yet, because they're waiting to see what happens when they go to the COMCOM on December fifth. How about if we just leave the meeting open? We'll just plan on having a meeting on the fifteenth?
Yeah, but if you want to cancel, how are you going to cancel it?
We'll just come and meet and if there's nothing on the agenda, we'll just say, okay, we're here, nothing's on the agenda.
I'm fine moving it to, to January.
January, yeah, I'm also fine, but the only problem is, you know, since we have this, what is the, you know...
Right, exactly, I understand.
Well, the thing is though, am I going to post it? Because it's gonna be posted twice in advance of the meeting, so I kinda have to know.
Well, so when is our January meeting scheduled for, our regular January meeting?
The January meeting?
Yeah.
The fourth, third one, third Thursday?
Third Thursday, which is January nineteenth?
The nineteenth, yeah.
Nineteenth.
All right, so that's less than sixty-five days from now.
If the petitioner, if the petitioner does send a request to continue it until January, then we're, as long as we have something from the petition, then we're, then we're...
Then we could go even further.
We, we're, we're okay.
And what, what if if we get any other...
Okay, then we'll just leave it open?
No, no, I'm just asking, you know, I'm not...
No, I understand.
I'm, I'm okay with the canceling, but the thing is, you know, what if if we get any other petition? So do we need to act on or we can always say January?
No, we have, we'd have to, we'd have to act, so I think the best thing right now is, because it's so...
So just, I'm, you know, asking.
Just, we'll just leave it. Does anybody else have anything? That sound okay? Charlie, we'll just leave the December fifteenth meeting on the...
Yeah.
Okay, all right, so we're just gonna leave the December fifteenth meeting, okay? So you will, you'll just go ahead and post, you know, we'll wait till December fifth, see what happens at the COMCOM, and then we'll reach out to the petitioner to see what needs to be done. As long as they, that they understand that, whatever other documentation that they have to get from COMCOM, DCR, or whatever, it needs to be to us within ten to fourteen days prior to the hearing, to the, to opening of, to we actually have them on the agenda.
But are we gonna assume that we're gonna have them in January? Because December fifth, that's not gonna be enough time.
I understand that, I understand that, but maybe they might have everything done and they might be able to get the work, the, the all paperwork.
Can you reach out to them and ask them, you know, what they want? But tell them, you know, we need this time, timeframe, so if they have December fifth, can we have it in ten days? No. We cannot, right?
No.
So in that case, you know, maybe you should reach out to them, ask them for, in a written extension from them. We need something in writing.
Yeah, and you have, and you have that new, that new paperwork, okay?
So... That's all we need.
So just send, just send it to them.
So should we just, we're just gonna try to extend it?
Right, right.
Okay.
Explaining them, you know, given the reason, you know, we don't have enough time, so is it okay for them to do it in January? And if it is, you know, we do need to have something in writing.
Do you have the actual petition from there? 'Cause I, I just don't see it here in my stack of stuff, it might be here.
Yeah, it should be.
Oh, here it is, here it is. What's that, what's the date, November fourth? Oh, well, that, that puts us beyond the sixty-five days then in our January meeting.
Yeah.
So they, they have to...
So they, either they would have to agree to move it, or we've gotta have it in an earlier meeting. If we wanna be safe here.
I mean, I could advertise it and stuff for the December meeting and then just, if you could just continue it, if we have to continue it, let's...
Now, just check with them now, Toby. Ask them, since they are going for the COMCOM on December fifth, we do not have enough time to advertise what they want to do. If they want to continue on to January, we need to have it in writing.
And you have that, and you have that new form?
Right.
Okay, so when you just scan that phone and send it, that form, and send it as a detachment and just, you know, ask them if they would... Because like Raj said, we're not gonna have enough time for them to get, because the fifth and then the fifteenth, if they have to go to DCR and they have to go to DEP, you know, they may even have to go to the water district. So we just need to make sure that we have all our, you know, all that paperwork 'cause we don't wanna be playing, have to keep trying to continue this because they don't have all the paperwork. We're trying to get ahead of that, get all the paperwork, everything that they need before they come to us, okay?
All right, so...
Just in case, you know, if they say we don't want to continue, then we may need to advertise.
Okay? All right, any other business we need to discuss?
Did you get the signature from, for the vote sheet?
John, can you sign this, please? Toby, did you give John a copy of this application?
I don't know where to sign my name to, it's like a blank check.
He should have, I, I set out...
John, you have a copy of this, right?
Yeah.
No, I'm asking you, do you have a copy?
I set out...
I'm asking, do I want it?
No, no.
Well, we just like to make sure that you're, you know, wanna try to keep everybody informed of what's going on just in case, you know, somebody has to, you know, can't make it or whatever. And if we need you, we'll be able to call you and you'll be well informed.
Is this a copy for me or is this my take from somebody's?
No, that's fine, yeah.
This is gonna happen on the fifteenth?
Not necessarily. This may wait till January. It all depends on what happens when he goes to, to Conservation Commission on the fifth of Jan-, December. Right, you mightn't have enough time to get all the information that he needs to get to us.
That property is fine with?
I, we can't discuss that, we just, we're just talking in general, when we can set this appointment up. Okay, all right, anything else?
So, because Nancy, they wanted to know about the December meeting, so we're keeping it?
Toby, there are two things. Once, check with the, check with them. And if they say we are not, we are not extending, then we need to advertise, and then we are keeping the meeting. If they agree to extend, you know, then we will cancel the meeting.
All right, so...
So if you, if we can get the email out to them, you know, by Monday, okay? Then they should, you know, I mean, I understand that next week is, is Thanksgiving, you know. Probably a lot of people leaving early on Wednesday, probably not gonna work on Friday. So we may not get it, we may not get nothing till, almost till the end of the month, which is fine, you know. But as soon as they can get it to us, you know, it'll make it a lot easier. I just wanna make sure that before they come to us, that they have all the paperwork that they need and that they have talked to everybody that they need to do.
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, anything else?
That's it.
Nate, Charlie, anything?
No.
Okay, I'll int...
I wanna go home.
Okay, I'll int.
I'll send that again.
Motion to adjourn is, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Who made the motion and who seconded?
Raj and Charlie.
No, Nate.
Oh, Nate, I'm sorry.
A second.